All right, we'll call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order Wednesday, September 16, 2020. And pursuant to Section 3 of the Declaration of Emergency, there will be no in-person attendance at this meeting. The public may view the meeting live at the variety of links that have been provided. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. And so we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is an opportunity for public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. If an agenda item is also listed as a public hearing, persons may wait to speak until that particular item. And is the phone number available, Holly? So for this Planning Commission, public comment may be made by phoning in at 702-589-9629. We'll give a couple of minutes for any call-ins. We have had comments that were submitted via email, which will be read at this time.
All of the public comments that have been submitted are regarding Agenda Item Number Three. First one, "My name is Lynn Doherty, and I'm a longtime resident of Boulder City. I am writing to express my support of the proposed text amendment for City Code Chapter 11-23 that is being addressed at the Planning Commission meeting on 9/16/2020. I feel that the current wording leads to unfair treatment of Boulder City residents who are trying to keep our streets clear of large vehicles and trailers. It forces them to incur expenses to pour concrete that is, in my opinion, unnecessary. These residents will in effect be punished for keeping their property safe and our city a beautiful place to live. Thank you for your kind attention to this matter."
My name is Ed Dube. I am a Boulder City resident. We support City Code Chapter 11-23, word change, being addressed during Planning Commission meeting on 9/16/2020. The city is acting more and more like an HOA. This is from Chris Erlanger, "To Boulder City City Clerk, I am a resident of Boulder City, 1502 Coriah Court. I support the text amendment for City Code Chapter 11-23 that is being addressed at the 9/16/2020 Planning Commission meeting. Sincerely, Chris Erlanger." Next comment is from Ibrahim Garba. "Dear Sir, my name is Ibrahim Garba, a Boulder City resident. I am writing to let you know I support text amendment for City Code Chapter 11-23 that is being addressed at the 9/16/20 Planning Commission meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Sincerely, Ibrahim A. Garba." Next public comment is from Debbie Lemos. "My name is Deb Lemos. I am a resident of Boulder City. I support text amendment for City Code Chapter 11-23 that is being addressed at the 9/16 Planning Commission meeting. The next public comment is from Randy Lemos. "I am a resident of Boulder City, and my name is Randy Lemos. I support text amendment for City Code Chapter 11-23 that is on the agenda for Planning Commission meeting on 9/16. Next public comment is from Rita Leesberg. "My name is Rita Leesberg. I am a 40-plus-year resident of Boulder City. I support the text amendment for City Code Chapter 11-23 that is being addressed at the September 16, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. I applaud anyone who makes the effort to park their recreational vehicles off the street and behind their wall. I do not see any reason for a concrete driveway as long as the property is kept presentable. Sincerely, Rita Leesberg." Next comment is from Rick Sixberry, "To whom it may concern, my name is Rick Sixberry, and I have been a Boulder City resident since 1986. I want to express support for the text amendment developed by Randy Lemos to City Code Chapter 11-23. The current code says we cannot park a vehicle on rocks, etc., only concrete on our own property. I for one do not care to cover my property in concrete for a number of reasons that are my own. Please make sure my support for the text amendment is passed along to the Planning Commission before the 9/16/20 meeting. Thank you for your time, Rick Sixberry." The next public comment is provided by Cheryl A. Wagner. "Dear Planning Commission and City Council members, it has come to my attention that there is a text amendment for City Code Chapter 11-23. This text amendment would allow a person to drive any vehicle from the street to their back or side yard while driving on any type of rock or gravel, and they would be able to store a vehicle in the side or backyard on any type of rock or gravel. I feel like it is the homeowner's right to be able to do this and support this text amendment fully. Thank you for your time, Cheryl A. Wagner." That concludes the written comments.
Okay, thank you. So we'll continue on with the Agenda Item Number One for Possible Action, Approval of the Minutes of the August 19, 2020 Regular Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve.
We have a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
And a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Agenda Item Number One, the minutes have been approved. Item Number Two for Possible Action, AFDA-20-193, Eric Stafford, 362 and 364 Katz Eye Drive, zoning review of an application for two residential allotments for construction year 2020/21 pursuant to Title 11, Chapter 41 of the City Code. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been about a year since the Planning Commission has seen an allotment request, but just as a reminder, per the growth control ordinance, the Planning Commission's only duty is to confirm that zoning is compliant and to forward this to the allotment committee. Staff has reviewed the plans in detail, and they have been revised, and they both comply with all zoning requirements.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Any discussion? Okay, well, if anybody wants to propose a motion?
I'll move to approve.
It's to forward. Mr. Chairman, if the Commission is interested, the appropriate motion would just be to forward this request to the allotment committee.
Okay. So Ernie, is that then your proposal that we...
I would propose we move it forward to the allotment committee.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
I'll second that motion.
And we have a second by Mayor Matuska. Any discussion? Okay, well, all in favor of the motion to move this allotment request forward?
Aye.
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 And any in the negative?
Is someone flipping pages in front of the microphone?
I am sorry, that was me.
Just pick the harder here, thanks.
So I believe that was unanimous. Okay. And Agenda Item Number Three for Possible Action, AM 20-353, Resolution Number 1197, Randall Lemos, "A public hearing and recommendation to the City Council on a proposed amendment to Title 11, Chapter 23 of the City Code regarding the parking and paving standards for individual, single-family lots or mobile home sites." Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting that secondary driveways to parking areas in side and rear yards not be paved, and that vehicles be allowed to park on gravel or landscape rock in those side and rear yards. As background, the applicant owns property on Turnberry Court in the single-family residential zone, and earlier this year, he obtained a building permit for a detached carport. Part of the approval process for the carport permit involved the condition that, per the code, would require a hard-surface driveway to the new carport, as well as the existing detached garage, which was built after the code required those hard-surface driveways. There is currently a paved driveway to the existing attached garage, but the applicant drives over landscape rock to the detached structures, which are in the side yard behind a wall and gate. The applicant provided a plan showing the required paving so that the carport permit could be issued. Now that the carport is in place, the applicant is requesting a code amendment so that the additional driveway area will not need to be paved. Regarding the code, the current language was adopted in 2013, and it requires hard-surface parking areas for individual, single-family lots or mobile home sites. The 2013 code amendment was requested by planning commissioners, who were concerned about two things. One was residents paving over most or all of their front yards for parking, and the second was relative to residents parking on landscape rock in their front yards. Per the adopted code, it is prohibited to park or drive vehicles over non-paved areas, among other requirements, such as limiting the amount of paving in the front yard to 50%. To summarize the applicant's request, which is attached to the report, it basically creates two categories for driveways, a primary driveway and a secondary driveway. Primary driveways would still need to be a hard surface, as obviously they are now, since everywhere a vehicle parks or drives is required to be a hard surface. Per the draft code, the primary driveway would be any driveway accessed directly from a street. Existing established, non-paved driveways that are defined, you know, clearly delineated, something other than just landscape rock, would be legally non-conforming, meaning they'd be grandfathered in. And this proposed change would not affect other portions of the code, such as new driveways being prohibited in certain parts of the historic district. Secondary driveways, per the attached proposal, would not need to be a hard surface. And for the purpose of this, a secondary driveway is defined as extending off of a primary driveway or from an alley. For these secondary driveways, per the applicant's request, owners could drive over but not park on landscape rock or gravel in the front yard in order to access parking areas in side and rear yards. Again, existing established, non-paved driveways would be legally non-conforming. In addition to the driveway aspect in terms of parking, per the applicant's request, parking would be permitted on landscape rock or gravel inside and rear yards. Obviously, most properties typically have a paved driveway in the front yard. The attached draft amendment contains an alternate option should the Planning Commission wish to require that parking areas be paved inside and rear yards. And this would still allow for driving over landscape rock or gravel, per the applicant's request. The applicant believes that allowing parking and driveway areas beyond the primary driveway, allowing these secondary areas to be unpaved would be better for the environment and would be less burdensome for homeowners to comply with. If approved, the change would also benefit the owners of some lots who've had trouble complying with the maximum 50% paving limit in the front yard. There are a few cases where the home has a three-car garage, and they still want RV parking on the side, and depending on the lot shape, it's sometimes tough to meet that 50% limit without going over it. So not requiring paving to access any side yard RV parking would be helped by this particular code amendment. The staff report contains additional information and background information, and after your discussion with the applicant and the public hearing and your deliberations, when you're ready to make a motion, if you're recommending approval to the City Council, you'll need to specify which option you're recommending, per the exhibit on Page 63 of the packet, being whether vehicles could both park and drive on rock in side and rear yards, or whether they would just be able to drive over rock but would still have to actually be parked on a hard surface in a side or rear yard.
Thank you. I would like to ask a question to frame our discussion here. So some direction or input would be helpful. Is it our parameter to strictly review the language that's proposed rather than rewrite, if you will, the proposed language as submitted by the applicant? Or are we open to changing and modifying at our discretion, all the paragraphs included?
The Planning Commission is certainly welcome to make recommended changes that would be forwarded to the City Council. This is one of those can be complex issues. It took numerous drafts for us to get to what was here because of the many different types of lots that are in town. So if the nature of your changes are absolutely simple and clear tonight, what we may do is postpone to bring back the request to you next month with the revisions we think you're asking for and go from there. But part of that would also be contingent on what the applicant's preference is. If the Planning Commission wants something different, like I said, one option is we'd bring back an alternate version for you next month, and then what would proceed to the City Council would be, if the applicant was opposed to the recommended changes of the Planning Commission, we would basically take both versions to the City Council and specify which was the applicant's proposal and which was the Planning Commission's recommendation. And of course, at that point, the Council could still make further changes or kick it back to the Planning Commission. So nothing is set in stone.
Thank you. I do agree that this is one that could run away from us really quickly with the minutia, and would hope that we could stay close to the applicant's proposed language rather than drifting too far away. And if we do find that we want to drift very far away, I think we should take Susan's suggestion and ask for a revision and then bring it back. So with that, I'll open it up to, let's see, is this the opportunity for public comment now?
Actually, the first opportunity would be any questions of staff, and then we would contact the applicant for your questions of him.
Okay, thanks. So any questions of staff?
Mr. Oh, okay, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Matuska.
Questions? Thank you. Thank you, Susan, for that nice overview. So just again, to make sure that I understand, primary driveways were really suggesting no change at this point, that hard surface is what's required both for driving and parking. And secondary driveways are the area we are addressing. And I just want to make sure that I understand, in the description here on Page 59 of our package, it says a secondary driveway extends off of a primary driveway or from an alley. Would a secondary driveway, could it also extend from the front street? And I think about my own home, where I've got a primary driveway that goes to my garage, then I've got a second driveway on the opposite side of the property that goes along the side of the house, and I have a carport there. Would that, I'm guessing that would also be a secondary drive, right?
I know, since I've delivered packets to your home, I'm somewhat familiar. I'm trying to recall, is there a circular driveway connecting the two? Okay, thank you. Basically, what you have now with two separate driveways extended off your lot would not be allowed in future situations because it violates the standards of the RTC, Regional Transportation Commission, because those standards, which the city has adopted, only allow one driveway per a residential lot unless it is a circular drive. So per the draft code amendment, as I said, unless it's a corner lot, you know, you'd only be allowed to have one driveway off the street. That would be a primary driveway, would have to be paved. The way the draft is currently written, if it's a corner lot, basically the code says any driveway accessed from a street is a primary driveway. So on a corner lot, if you wanted driveways off of both streets, they would need to be paved. And to be fair and not to confuse things further, it occurred to me after this report went to press that there would be situations with a corner lot where if their entire side and rear yard is behind a wall, the primary issue really would be that the, what is called the apron, you know, the driveway leading up to the wall would need to be paved. But if the commission, and ultimately the City Council, is in favor of letting people park and drive, you know, over rock anywhere in a backyard, on a corner lot, if everything's behind a wall, it may not be necessary to pave, or practical or logical to pave an entire driveway to a garage elsewhere in that rear yard in that case. But again, I apologize, that's getting into the minutia. We'll see where you're going later on with this.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood. So realistically, my scenario is kind of an anomaly. And then a secondary driveway apparently is any driveway accessed from an alleyway as well?
Correct. You know, pretty much it's the historic lots in the town site that abut alleys, and most of them, that's where they have their parking access off anyway.
Okay.
And in many cases, the garage is right up on the alley line, which is where it's allowed to be. But generally, most people have their yards fenced in, and presumably, at least my impression back in 2012 and 13, when the Planning Commission was discussing this, the major concern was what was viewable in front yards.
Exactly, and I was part of those discussions. My next question is, just to kind of put a fine point on how do we define a side yard? And again, where I'm going is to avoid, I mean, if we allow parking on gravel or a hard surface in a side yard, is the thing being parked, in essence, behind the front of the house, or is it still allowed to stick out in front of the house? So how does the definition work?
That may be one of the minutia that might need to be clarified in the code, but certainly the intent that I had in mind was the idea that the front yard is, actually, the code does define front yard as from side to side from the front line of a building. And again, apologies for the minutia of code details. The code has two types of front yards, a required front yard, which is the minimum setback to a home, and most homes are at that minimum, typically 20-foot setback. But if a home is set back, like say on the deep B-hill lots, and it's set back 100 feet from the front property line, per code, that 100 feet in front of the house is all front yard. It's beyond the required front yard, but it's still front yard. And that's how we treat it in terms of location of accessory buildings. For instance, accessory buildings are only allowed in side and rear yards, and that's where that definition of front yard comes into play. So that is certainly the intent of this amendment, is that any driveway area off a street, the primary driveway effectively off the street is that which is in front of the house. And then the side yard would be, for the purposes of this, would be to the side of the house.
Okay. Which just brings me, for clarification, to my last question, and that is, can you kind of remind us regarding the guidance on front yard parking? I mean, I think it would be pretty obvious that it would be allowed on your driveway, your primary driveway, but could you kind of expound on, is it allowed elsewhere in the front yard?
Currently?
Yes.
Basically, what the code currently states is anywhere you park or drive has to be paved. And within a required front yard, specifically the front 20 feet of the lot, you cannot have more than 50% of paving for a driveway. So people can still have a sidewalk going up to their front door, and that doesn't count towards the 50%.
Okay, so if they had right up to the 50%, for instance, they could park virtually anywhere on that hard surface in the front yard?
Correct. But as noted, the desire of the Planning Commission back in 2013 is they were concerned about the people who either paved over the entire front yard so they could use it for parking, or were just parking cars all over the front yard.
Right.
Beyond the driveway area.
All right, thank you very much for your patience with my questions. Remember our last offer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to one of the things that Member Matuska was talking about with the secondary driveway, I wanted to get clarification. There's a number of homes that are down on the golf course that have double RV parking, meaning they've got driveway and RV parking area directly next to their driveway where their garage is, and then on the complete opposite side of the house, separate, they've got another RV parking strip. Is that a secondary driveway?
Well, my assumption in that type of example, and I'll admit I wasn't driving through town and looking at aerial photos of the entire town, but my assumption in that case is that the driveway's on one side, and that they're driving over rock to get to the RV parking on the other side?
I can pull up an example for you if you needed me to, but I know for a fact that there are homes that have paved homes, or paved driveways with an attached RV area next to it that's paved, and then on the complete opposite side of the house, they've got more paving as well. I don't know what the percentage is, whether they went over that 50% threshold, but it's got to be close.
Well, I guess my question to you, though, is are there two separate driveways?
I'd have to drive by and see if there was a second curb cut. I doubt there was. I would imagine that they're jumping over the curb to do that.
And that's... And that's what I was leading to, is because since we've, since the Public Works Department generally doesn't approve two driveways unless there's a circular driveway. In some cases, since a permit is not required for paving, some people may just go ahead and pave right up to the sidewalk a second driveway, and the city would never know, since we don't require permits now for flatwork. And they may, and those people then may be either driving over the sidewalk and curb on that second driveway, or they may be driving over the sidewalk and curb and just crossing over rock to get to paving on the side of the home. Technically, both of those actions are not allowed. I have asked the Public Works Department before if it's illegal to be driving over curbs and sidewalks, basically where there's not a driveway, you know, or where one hasn't been approved with an approved curb cut to the street. And Public Works says, no, that's not allowed. But obviously, catching something in the act when it's happening is, would be difficult, and I'm sure you're right. I'm sure there are many people who, if they have wide enough side yards, they may have paved that opposite side yard. So in this case, this code amendment would not legalize that. What it would do, and the applicant used his neigh, we were discussing his neighbor as an example, and let me see what page the aerial photo is on.
I've got it up here.
The aerial photo is on page eighty-six of the packet. And, oh, you can see his lot highlighted, and then there's a corner lot adjacent to that. Now, what he said his neighbor might do, I don't know if the neighbor, it doesn't appear that there's an RV in the photo, and so he may not even have one now, but he brought up the example of, wouldn't that neighbor be allowed to just drive right into the side yard from Turnberry Court? Basically, drive over the rock to get to the backyard with his code amendment. And I said, what his code amendment would allow, would allow for somebody to drive up the existing driveway and then cross over the rock to get to a side yard. But it doesn't, you know, the code and Public Works, you're just not allowed to drive over sidewalks onto rock to get to your yard. There are issues of kicking gravel and other materials into the sidewalk and city right of way. Now granted, the homeowners who do that may do that on a very seldom basis, so it might not practically be a problem, but it probably does happen out there. The way the code is drafted and per the RTC and Public Works standards, you're not supposed to be driving over sidewalks unless there's an approved curb cut for a driveway.
Gotcha. And I know that, that homeowner lot one seventeen on that aerial map, I mean, they've got an RV gate on the right side of their house, if you're looking at it from the top down. So at some point in time, I'm sure that was utilized. Anyway, I don't know that that totally answered my question as far as if that is what we're considering secondary, was that a simple yes or no?
What the code is drafted to say is that a secondary driveway extends off of a primary driveway. As I said, in the example for the neighbor, what it would allow, which might not be convenient for an RV, but what it would allow if passed, somebody to drive up the driveway and then drive over the rock to get to the side yard. This code amendment does not authorize people to just drive over sidewalks to get to wherever they want. That's, that's not a factor of the zoning code that, that can be addressed, because that's a separate Public Works and RTC standard.
All right. And, and this might be outside the scope as far as what we were talking about at the beginning of the meeting. But in my mind, if somebody has a three-car garage and wants to park an RV or a boat on the side, and they're hitting over that fifty percent threshold, and it looks normal, like many of the homes in Tuscany Retreat, or obviously they're not parking over the front yard, but I think that, I don't know where the fifty percent threshold came from, if that was to borrow one of former Councilman Harhays statements that he loved to make, plucked from an air number, where the fifty percent came from, or if we need to look at, I mean, if, to me, it seems reasonable that we should allow hard paving in front of, obviously the primary driveway, the three-car, and then the RV, but if we get over that fifty percent and it looks normal, I think that should be allowed. That's my personal feeling.
Well, obviously, it'd be difficult to put in a code that you can have more than fifty percent if it looks normal.
I don't know how to word it.
And I understand. I mean, basically, the practical situation in that case is to increase the percent limit. The number wasn't just plucked out of a hat. You can see from all the minutes that were attached to the report, there were actually discussions about forty percent at one point, and so, since at the time, Tuscany Retreat was the newest subdivision of any size in town, and they were expensive homes, so they had bigger garages, and a lot of them had RV carports to the side of them, you know, we, you know, did a scan and calculation of the driveways to see, okay, is fifty percent, you know, is forty percent going to work? Is fifty percent going to work? Because we didn't want to create a situation where we'd have a bunch of variance requests off the bat. And at the time, fifty percent looked reasonable. However, as I've stated, we've got some cases now where people are wanting or have a three-car garage, and they want an RV carport on the side of that, and on a standard width lot, meaning if it's a straight street, so that your lot is exactly seventy feet wide or wider, that can still work. Where we've noticed it can be more of a problem, even if it's just a two-car garage with RV parking on the side, is if a lot is on a curve, and your front yard might only have, say, a frontage of fifty feet, and then it widens out really wide in the back so that the average per code is still met, but your front yard is much narrower. And if that's the case, you're hitting that fifty percent limit, excuse me, really quick, you know, even for a more normal driveway. So certainly, on that aspect, which the applicant, that's not the applicant's request at all. You know, he's not proposing changing the paving limit in the front yard. But if the planning commission wants, you know, staff to address that, that can be put on our to-do list.
I don't know how to word it, but I would like to address that scenario where we would like to allow, I mean, if the rest of the planning commission is in favor for it, but allowing a three-car garage and RV parking, my personal feeling is that we should be encouraging homeowners and tenants, occupants, whatever, to park their RVs and their boats and ATVs and trailers and whatnot in their side yard instead of on the street. And whatever it takes to get there, within reason, I mean, I don't want to see people parking their boat in front of their front door.
Well, to be fair, the code doesn't prohibit that. We don't regulate what vehicles can be parked and also to radiate. That's not part of this code amendment. The code doesn't prohibit anybody from parking in their side or rear yard. It just simply requires that that space be paved. But in addition to that, and it correlates, you're only supposed to have not more than fifty percent of your front yard in paving. But we don't prohibit you, in fact, it was brought up at the commission discussions years ago, if people want to pave over their entire side and rear yard for parking, we have no problem with that.
I have no problem with that either.
The applicant's request is just the opposite. He wants to, you know, not have the requirement that parking areas, be they driveways or parking pads, that they not be paved if they're in a side or rear yard. So that's the issue that is before you.
And, which brings me to my, the next point I was going to get, is I want to, I don't know, again, I don't know how to word this, but if they're going to park in the side yard, and I mean side yard, next to their garage, closest to their property line, that's okay, but if they are thinking that they're going to get away with putting rock over the other part of the house and be able to park there, parking something in their front yard, I don't think that's sightly for Boulder City.
Well, again, that's the purpose of having a requirement that the primary driveway be paved.
Well, what were?
And that parking not be allowed on rock in the front yard. The purpose of this code and the way it's drafted is you can park on paving in your front yard, that's the primary driveway. But if you want to have an RV, you know, in your side or rear yard, what this code amendment as proposed by the applicant would allow, it would allow you to drive over rock from your driveway to get to your side yard, and then park in your side or rear yard on rock. The code specifically does not allow parking on rock in a front yard. That's, you know, exactly what the planning commission didn't want seven years ago.
And I agree with that. All right, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Just ask if you had any additional questions right now for staff. Anybody else have questions for staff? Mr. Biase?
Yes. The, Susan, just one clarification. In the text language there, you boxed alternate option B one B, which lists that, that item B. Is it, is, is that paragraph under that alternate option really, or the paragraph right above it, which is really B two B? I just.
Oh, I apologize for the typo. You're right.
I just want to make sure I'm not.
It is a typo. It should be B two B, yes.
And perhaps just in, it's again, very minor, in the B one A, in that where we go, "Primary driveway and shall be paved from side to side," it, paved being, as you've defined it, in B is, is a hard surface, should, is it understood with what you have there that that will only apply paved with a hard surface? Do we, do we need that additional words there?
I'm sorry, which paragraph?
So in, in A, one, B one A, it says, "Any driveway accessed directly from the street, primary driveway shall be paved from side to side." And then when you read the definition in item B, for purposes of this section, paving is defined as hard surface. And I'm just wondering, when you say paved from side to side, is it clearly understood that it will be paving of, defined as hardscape?
Right, as defined in the paragraph below.
There's no question in your mind that that's the interpretation. The way B is set up is way that will, that defines paved, the word paved in.
Right, paving relates to paved. I mean, right, the, the point of paragraph A was to state that your primary driveway at the front of the home shouldn't be just a couple of paved tire tracks. It's supposed to be paved from side to side, a typical full-width driveway. And paving is defined as in paragraph one B, which a lot, which is basically the same language as we currently have. That's what's in that.
Yeah, it's just, in the current language and everything, it just says paved hardscape. That's all, with hard surface. They expanded on paving, or paved or paving to include hardscape. Part of where I'm, and maybe I'm hung up on a very minor point, there's a thing what called type, type two rock, okay? It's a rock, but people oftentimes use that for driveways, because you can put that in, compact it down, and it's like asphalt, and it doesn't look good as a whatever. So again, I'm, I'm stretching. I just want to make sure that when I look at one, B one A, and it says paved, that there's no issue that that is paved as defined in B. And if that's the case, I'm.
Right. It, yeah, I'm not, if you have alternate wording.
The only alternate might be, say, paved as, as defined below, or just a hard, say, surface, paved hard surface or something. I'm just trying to fit with what is in B. You know what I mean? It's just a little, it's okay. I'm fine. I'm fine. You've explained to me, I'm okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that someone else that comes along doesn't take a different interpretation, that's all.
Right. I don't think there will be an issue with that. Now, you brought up the example of compacted type two. I would have to double-check with Public Works, but I believe that, you know, can be considered, basically, what B refers to in our existing language refers to as, "Others similarly durable hardened improved surface with a defined edge, subject to approval by the building official." I know that allows, it's been previously interpreted that that allows for chat, but that is the current standard, so.
Because I would.
The applicant is not, keep in mind, this is not a city staff-generated code amendment for cleanup. This is a code amendment request, required, requested by a citizen for something specific.
Yeah, but you, now I'm concerned, okay? I have to admit it, and I'm glad you clarified it, because now when I read the definition and when it says, and it's very clear when you start talking concrete, asphalt, pavers, brick, but when it says similar durable hardened surface, and if you would include type two compacted gravel, and that's for a primary driveway, I have a problem.
That's the, what the code allows now.
But then, because we're looking at that, and your words are there, maybe it's a good point to clean up.
I would say that unless the commission as a whole wants to direct staff to bring that option back, obviously, it's not part of the applicant's request. So it doesn't necessarily need to be a separate code amendment, but if you want to change.
Again, we're looking at a code amendment, and even though it's specific to, it's still how the language goes, we probably should do it all at the same time, I would think.
Well, I believe one of the concerns with the original code language, and it could be changed to apply to different zones, is that, you know, you've got your standard tract subdivision homes, you know, which a developer usually builds, and pretty much it's always going to have a paved driveway, the way most people define paved. But we also have a number of undeveloped lots and older subdivisions such as Bee Hill and Marina Highland Estates and other areas, and especially for Bee Hill, where it's a more rural atmosphere, where we allow farm animals, there are horses, they often have hundred-foot-long driveways leading to their home. And so this language allows an option for them. And, but, again, if the commission as a whole wants to see further cleanup in this code, you can recommend that. What you may want to do that in ca, in that case, is split your types of paving between the zones, and maybe require one type of paving in everything, say, between the R one dash five and the R one dash fifteen zones, and then for the rural areas, which are R one twenty, R one forty, and R one eighty, allowing that extra type of pavement. But again, it's not what the applicant is requesting. We were trying to draft the code amendment to reflect his wishes, but also try to not create problems for the many different types of lots in town.
Thank you. Either of our phone-in commissioners want to have questions for staff?
I'm okay.
No questions from C. Rudd.
Okay, thanks. Yes, sir, Mr. Dietrich.
On the, the recent comments by Mr. Biase, I would consider type two to be aggregate. I don't think that's. I don't think that's, um, what should be considered a hard surface, just like asphalt or, um, concrete.
And you may be right, to be honest, I would have to go back to Public Works. I know that, um, they described type 2 as an alternate material, but I think it was relatively applicant's proposal. I would have to go back and check. I know that previous Community Development Director Brock Armentraut made a determination that chat, um, would be, you know, fit that definition that's in the code now for an approved hardened surface. In terms of type 2 aggregate, I think what the pub- what the city engineer referred to was like four-inch compacted or something like that, but, um, honestly, that is beyond my realm of expertise, so if you want that explored further, we could always consult with the city engineer or have him come to another meeting. It depends on how deep into the weeds you wanna go on this for the applicant's request. Again, we were keeping the language the same-
Right.
-as what it is now.
Well, that was, that brings me to, my main point was that, uh, as I see it, we're being asked to choose between three alternatives. Number one is we, um, don't recommend to move forward on this, leave things as they are. Um, number two is we allow you to drive from your primary driveway across, um, landscape or, uh, whatever, and park your RV or vehicle on the side or the back of the house. Or option three would be that, the same as option two, except the, um, parking area must be a hard surface, like concrete or asphalt. I think that's what it basically comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions of staff? Okay, did the applicant want to be contacted via phone and, and, um, offer some input at this point?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hi, this is Tammy with the Planning Commission, and, uh, would you like to provide any comments?
Oh, yes, I would, I, I, I guess you're ahead of me, right? Cause I'm watching and you haven't gotten there yet.
There is, there's a little delay.
Yeah, I figured. Is it, is it best for me to go speakerphone?
We're here, we hear you fine right now.
No, we hear you just fine.
Okay, cause it's easier for me to speakerphone, I just wanted to see if there was, uh, any problems with that. And I'm not on it now, so I can go to it and see if you can hear me okay.
All right.
Okay, let me do that. How about now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Um, can, can I make a statement first?
Absolutely.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I wondered, I have a five-minute, uh, um, uh, little, uh, I guess you could say speech I wanna do. I wondered if that was appropriate for me to do that now?
Actually, what we wanna do is, um, open up the opportunity for our Planning Commission members to ask any questions of you.
Sure.
And, uh, that's the, the primary purpose of, of this, um, segment. And then if you want, as a citizen, to provide comments during the public comment section, that's probably the more appropriate time for your, your five-minute statement.
That would be great, yeah.
Okay. So I will put it out to the Planning Commission members if they have any questions for the applicant.
Hi, this is C. Rudd on the phone. Um, when you applied for the permit, it, it appears that, um, you had the drawing of the plot plan with the driveway included to achieve the permit, correct?
Um, you mean my drawing to install a concrete driveway?
Yes.
Um, yeah, after I, after I found out that there was a requirement for that, I, uh, worked with Susan to try to figure out what kind of driveway I had to put in and, and, uh, we kinda came up with, uh, that the whole thing had to be paved and, uh, so I, uh, came up with a drawing and then the building permit came through. And then I, uh, I think they kinda redefined that as, I, I could, uh, actually, I was given, uh, permission from Mr. Mays and Susan to, uh, tone that down, uh, to a couple of strips of concrete where the rubber meets the, meets the rock, I guess you'd say. And, uh, I haven't applied, I haven't given a plan for that yet, but I will have to do that if you guys deny this request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Lemos, it appears that we don't have any additional questions, uh, for you.
Okay.
Now, before you hang up, um, this is the, the time when we would go to public comment. So if you want to go ahead and make your statement, uh, as part of our public comment, uh, it'd be just as well for you to go ahead and do that now.
Mr. Chairman-
Okay.
Um, hold on, uh, hold on, Rattle, what's that?
It's time to open the public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry, public hearing. Okay, Mr. Lemos, go ahead.
Okay, um, my name is Randy Lemos and I'm a 27-year resident in Boulder City. I'd like to thank city staff, specifically Susan and Mike, and the Planning Commission for allowing me to express my views. I would like also to thank the city staff for working with me and helping me to get this text amendment written. It's not an easy job for them, I could see that. Uh, to summarize, this text amendment change would allow that all city residents would be allowed to drive any vehicle from their existing main driveway to their back or side yard while driving on any type of rock or gravel. They would also be able to store a vehicle in the side or backyard on any type of rock or gravel. And, uh, again, just to clarify, the second, uh, alternate to require, um, concrete is not something I think should be in, it's not something I, I, I agree with, let's put it that way. Uh, this would be in lieu of any, of having to install concrete at access to the residence's back or side yard as well as for storing vehicles upon and driving in the residence's back or side yard. As you know, I do have a vested interest in this text amendment being passed. If it fails, I will have to have two concrete strips poured from my existing driveway through my new RV cover path. Or put another way, pour concrete wherever my RV tires meet the rock in my front and side yard. This text amendment is also about restoring property rights. I believe, believe it should not be the city's concern to force a resident to access and park in their side or backyard without pouring a good deal of undesired and non-environmentally friendly concrete. I am sure you have read the article in your report addressing how rock is much more environmentally friendly than concrete. In my particular case, I probably will pull my RV in and out of my side yard not more than a dozen times a year. When you look at the photos you have of my yard, imagine two strips of concrete a foot wide, running askew from my existing driveway all the way to my RV cover path. I believe it would look rather unsightly. And I have not received any discernible reason from city staff for having to install this concrete. In fact, I think after working with them, they might agree with me. I have talked to many of my friends and acquaintances, and each one agrees with me that the language in the city code of not allowing a vehicle to travel on anything but concrete, or not allowing any vehicle to be parked on anything but concrete in back or side yard is not warranted. I would expect that you have received several emails addressing this text amendment change. I hope to get that info quantified and presented to me as well as presented to city council, and obviously I've already had it presented to me, thank you. I would also like city residents to be allowed to address their support or non-support of the text amendment change by contacting the city clerk via email in the same way that they have been instructed to do for this Planning Commission meeting. I would expect that these emails will be part of the record that is given to the city council prior to their addressing this issue at the designated city, city council meeting. My house is located in Boulder City Estates, Lewis Homes subdivision, which was the last big subdivision built along with back, the back nine holes of the Boulder, Boulder Munich Golf Course. The lots are fairly big, with many having rear access. Many of the homes were purchased by the homeowner for this very reason, and many lots have rear access gates for driving and storing vehicles in their back or side yards, such as boats, ATVs, quads, jet skis, RVs, utility trailers, motorcycles, et cetera. I believe this subdivision has about 200 homes. I drove through the subdivision and took a photo of most of the homes that have large gated rear or side access. I took about 30 photos of homes that either have driveways of rock in front of their side access gates, or behind the gate, rock was installed in the visible drivable area. These homes are either directly violating the code if you can see a vehicle in their backyard, or they have the potential to violate if they decide to store a vehicle, or have a vehicle already stored but it's out of sight from the street. There were also houses that had lawn, dirt, or wood chips up to their side access gate in the front yard. Some houses had vehicles parked on rock in the front, of, in front of the gate in the front yard. These homeowners are violators, are violating, or are potential violators of the city code. It would be much easier and cheaper to install rock as a driveway to their side yard than to pour concrete. This situation involves about 40 out of 200 homes, or about 20% potential violators, that this text amendment change would favor. I believe served to restore their property rights. I believe there are, there must be hundreds of homes in Boulder City under the same restraints with this, with this existing city code. Approving this text amendment is good for the citizens of Boulder City, is good for the rock contractors, is good for the city staff who won't have to deliver bad news to residents choosing to do as I did, and it is good for the environment. And one other point, um, I personally have no problem with storing vehicles behind a wall or a gate. I know you were concerned about some housing, houses where the side yard will actually be visible from the street, so if you wanted to modify that, uh, I would have no problem with that. Um, and also, I was curious, uh, if somebody did have the dual driveways, if they did get a curb cut for a driveway installed, I was curious to whether they would have to pave that. If they did do the curb cut, would they be able to drive over the rock to gain access to their gate, which would be an alternate driveway, without driving over the existing curb? That was the other concern I had, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemos, for your comments, appreciate it. And this is also the continuation of public hearing for, uh, citizens that want to call in, 702-589-9629.
Mr. Lemos, I'm gonna hang up now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
We're, uh, in public hearing time, but, yeah, what's your question?
I'm thinking while we're waiting for the, for the delay, would it be possible to suggest, or may I suggest that we have our discussion about this issue before we pass a motion?
We'll bring it back for further discussion, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll close the time for public hearing on agenda item number three and bring the discussion back to the commission members.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of thoughts.
Mr. Matuska.
So as I'd mentioned, I was, uh, certainly a part of the Planning Commission in 2013 and had pretty strong views on this and was probably one of those that was strongly recommending two things. One, the pavement, um, of a, you know, in other words, a drive, a paved driveway to get to a side or backyard. And also a proponent of the, I was actually proposing the 40% as front coverage, you know? Since then, and, and I would say this, if Mr. Lemos is listening, that his research, his arguments have certainly swayed me. And Nate, I'd kinda like to address your thought about the 50%. I think if we were to pass this, and I believe Susan even put this in the package, if we were to pass this, it would in essence, it would in essence allow somebody to, um, not have to exceed, we wouldn't have to change the code. We could still maintain a 50% coverage, which reduces the amount of front yard parking, um, and still allow people to get to their backyard because we would be allowing them to travel over unpaved surfaces now, so they wouldn't have to pave, let's say, over the 50% just to get to the side or the backyard. But anyway, I think my, my comment in a nutshell is I certainly can support the, um, the language as proposed by city staff. However, having driven around quite a bit since receiving my package, um, I do note a number of occurrences where people are parking just on landscape gravel, kind of in a side yard, adjacent or pretty close to a street. Thinking about my neighborhood, we don't have, uh, you know, our houses are basically 20 to 25 feet, uh, behind the sidewalk. And I think I personally, um, support using the alternate option that's included in the box. I would like to see some kinda hard surface at the location where the vehicle is, is parked.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask for clarification? I think what I heard you say was that you see people, when you said you see people parking to the side but close to the street, so is your concern about people who are parking on rock in a front yard? Because what that alternate language in the code is saying is that you could drive over rock anywhere, but all parking areas would have to be paved. And actually, yes, that would mean paving in front sides or rear yards, but what the draft code amendment requires is that any parking in the front yard would have to be paved. The point of the applicant's amendment would be that you could park in side or rear yards on rock. And the alternate, you know, that staff provided was for, if you weren't in favor of basically allowing cars anywhere in a side rear yard, driveways are parking, you know, on rock, is what the applicant is proposing. And if you were taking a more conservative approach, that would be saying, well, you can drive over rock anywhere, but if you're gonna park on, in your backyard or side yard, in addition to your front yard, anywhere you park would have to be paved. So the distinction with that alternate option is, um, particular to side and rear yards. It's whether or not would that have to be paved, but it sounded like what you were concerned about was people parking on rock in front yards. And that's not, would not be allowed in either case. I mean, cause this code amendment would not allow people to park on rock in their front yards, so-
No, you're right, and I appreciate you kinda going for that clarification, I kinda misstated. I, I, I think what I'm interested in, and this is the challenge of writing code, right? Is it sounds like many of us here really don't wanna see a lot of vehicles parked in front yards, certainly on gravel, just on any old landscape. That's certainly my view. And one of the, um, one of the comments that Tammy read earlier, mentioned specifically that she didn't mind vehicles parked on side yards behind gates. I mean, that would be an ideal, but I don't think we really can hold homeowners to that standard. You know, I, I, I guess maybe even as I talk my, I've talked myself in a circle here and maybe I'm not too- maybe I'm not too concerned about hardscaping, as long as parking in the front yard, um, is not allowed, which clearly the code doesn't allow parking in the front yard, other than on paved surfaces. I wouldn't want to see that changed. Um, and I think I'm at a point where I can live with, uh, gravel driveways, or, you know, gravel access routes to their side and backyard. Um, and I think it's pretty clear that if someone's parking in the backyard, or any place they park, they have to have gravel, not just dirt. So, yeah, I guess I'm just saying I can support it as written.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes, my, uh, my point that I was trying to make is, there are some homes that they have the ability to pave the side yard to go to their RV parking area that's paved as well. And I just think that that should be an option, so that they could pave that side yard, the front side yard going toward their RV parking area. Um, and, and if they do have a three-car garage or a four-car garage, um, as their primary drive, we shouldn't limit them from keeping their side yard paved, uh, going to their RV parking area. And that's where we're hitting that 50% threshold on, in some cases. That was my point, to maybe carve out an exception for that instance. Because there are plenty of people that enjoy parking on, that have their side area paved. And they park there all the time. And for us to say that they can't do it because they've exceeded their 50% for whatever reason, I just, I just think we should take a look at that, and that's all.
Member Matuska?
If I could just respond for a brief second. And I don't think that, um, the 50% applies to the side yard, or even backyard, concrete. I believe it's only in that required setback area, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess I just, if, if you'd like to revisit it, that's fine, maybe not, maybe that's not one of the things we do tonight, but, um, anyway.
Mr. DiTeresa?
Um, yeah, I don't think that, um, the 50% rule is going to be altered by this proposal. I think that's a separate issue that if we want to, we can look at, at a future meeting. Um, myself, I'm in favor of the 50% rule. Um, but, uh, just as Commissioner Matuska, uh, yeah, I'm comfortable with this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Biashi?
Couple of comments. Um, I'll do the easy one first, 50%. 50% is a, is a number. If you, if you need to change it, come back for a variance. I mean, it's, I don't suspect we have that many, but the few that might, just ask for a variance. And I'm sure reasonableness of, uh, commissions would probably consider it, especially as you described, three-car garages, perhaps side yard parking. But, so I don't see that as a, necessarily a big deal to worry about now. Um, if, from a, just an overall standpoint, and believe me, I'm very familiar with parking issues coming out of Lake Medio Estates, and issues that we have dealt with there, our parking requirements are extremely different. Um, and so I kind of look at what we have, and then I look at this, and I think trying to be very more, more reasonable, because again, HOAs can, of course, regulate it, uh, differently. Um, I look at parking as being on paved surface, period. It's, it's the beauty of it. Um, I think, um, the more parking area you have, the more parking you're going to have. And of course, the more, um, and so therefore, if, if you have a lot of concrete, you have a lot of payers, you open up the possibilities, front, side, wherever, to park stuff. Um, usually, the biggest concern, and I know it's part of our requirements, is, uh, storage. The, the issue you really are getting into with a lot of this stuff is how much stuff is, are people really storing in the side yards that are not being used, and they just sit there? Um, that's where fences come in handy, because fences at the front of the house can, of course, block a lot of that stuff and mitigate a lot of that problem. I also believe in property rights. People should have the ability to get and make use of their side yard. And so if they happen to keep what I think is the idea of more decorative or a balanced amount of decorative rock and plantings to paved stone, you, you do want to encourage it, because number one, it will keep, they'll keep fewer vehicles from parking in the front. So clearly, we should open up access to the side yards. And whether it's paved, um, whether it's rock, you know, I have my preference, I pave everything, only because it frankly, it's a lot better. I don't want to see grooves in gravel. I know darn well what's going to happen if you have gravel all the way back. Um, it's going to look bad. You're going to have ruts that people aren't going to take care of. You're going to, uh, actually, that will cause plants to grow weeds, because it stirs it up, it gets closer to the dirt. However, that said, I don't care. I mean, the fact is, I'd rather have more rock, but I also think it's, makes sense to have people being able to drive over it, to get to the side yard. Whether it's paved on the side or not, I think it's stupid to not pave it. You know, tires rot easier, quicker. There's a lot of problems with it. But, you know, those are personal choices people can make. Um, so, um, I, frankly, I'd be okay with the code the way it was, if it only said one thing, allow, allow access to side yards over gravel. I mean, to me, it could have been rewritten even differently. But, um, but if we went with, um, I, probably the way it is, is probably okay. If you want to have gravel on the side, you want to have gravel in the front, which I actually like the idea of gravel on the front, because again, there's more landscaping, and you can't park on it. That's the big deal. You should park on hardscape. And now, if you have your 50% issue, cover a variance. 50% is generally going to cover stuff. The exceptions are, can be dealt with. That's my comment.
Thank you. On the telephone, uh, Member Bonner or Rudd, do you have any comments?
No comment from Steve Rudd.
No comment from Beth.
Fair enough. Um, just a couple of comments before we come to a possible motion. I think it's important that, uh, we take this for what it is, and also for what it isn't. We're not expanding, you know, by accepting or potentially suggesting this language onto city council, uh, that any, that much change. It's very, very, uh, narrow in its scope, and it's well-defined. And I, I'm hopeful that as it, um, is discussed, and a, a motion is, is considered, that, that, uh, we do keep it strictly here in the scope that it's given to us. So, that's all I've got to say. Do we have anybody that wants to, uh, give a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Member Matuska?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Chapter 1123, using the language proposed by staff. Do I need to say, "without the alternate"?
That would be better to clarify, because it's actually, the alternate language was staff's. Um, other than that, it's the applicant's request. And just for clarification of anybody who might be walking, watching, excuse me, the Planning Commission doesn't approve, um, text amendments, you would be approving a resolution, which is a recommendation on a text amendment. But if, if I may, if what I'm hearing you saying is you would like to, um, you would be moving to approve Resolution Number 1197, per the applicant's request, and not utilizing the alternate option in the draft.
Precisely.
Well-stated, Member Matuska.
Thank you.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll call for a vote on, uh, recommendation for approval to, uh, city council on the language change. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Member Rudd, was that a nay from your side?
No, that was an aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. So that's a unanimous approval. Thank you. And item, Agenda Item Number Four, Monthly Progress Report on Development Allotments.
No comment.
And number five is Public Comment. Each person has up to five minutes to speak, at the discretion of the Chair. Comments made during the public comment period of the agenda may be on any subject. All remarks shall be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole, not to any individual member of the Planning Commission, of the audience, or to the staff. There shall be no personal attacks against the Chair, members of the Planning Commission, city staff, or any other individual. No persons other than members of the Planning Commission and the person who has the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the Planning Commission, without the permission of the Chair preside, or presiding officer. No action may be taken on the matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda item, as an item upon which action will be taken. And we'll open public comment. If anybody would like to call in, 702-589-9629. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and that will conclude the Planning Commission meeting for September 16th, 2020.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.